All right, it is 6:00 PM. I will call this electronic meeting of the common council to order. As this is an electronic meeting and we've got close to 20 people on here, I would ask everybody on the call to please mute yourselves when you're not speaking. As we go through these discussion items, I will call on council members individually. So please wait until your turn to talk. If you want to go talk a second time around on a certain issue, I can come back to you. Because this is an electronic meeting, we do have to conduct a roll call on all of the votes. So I will hand it over to clerk treasurer Leann Aldrich to conduct a roll call of members that are here.
Gail O'Connor.
President.
Andy Flora.
President.
Mike Isley. Spencer Kingery.
President.
Cody Nelson.
President.
All right, thank you clerk treasurer Aldrich. Leann and I are here as well. We have a lot of members of the public on here, so I'm not going to try to go through at this point and identify everybody that's on. So I will head straight to the agenda. Tonight's business, we are discussing the Delphi Small Business Resilience Grant. The first item of business that I have is proposed resolution 2020-9, Resolution Appropriating Additional Edit Funds. The purpose of this resolution is to appropriate the funds. So as if we had to use local funds for businesses that didn't qualify for OKRA, we would have these funds available in addition to rainy day. Before we have a motion in a second, I will open it up for discussion. Since we're doing this electronically, President Pro Tim Connor, do you have discussion items on resolution 2020-9?
I have a couple of questions. How did you come to the amount of $100,000?
Because we had $98,600 in rainy day.
Okay, but we're not going to need that much, correct? We're not going to need this to go into the edit budget because this is non-reimbursable money, right?
It is not needed, no, but if we appropriate $100,000 and we don't use it, it still goes back into the edit fund.
Where is it going into the edit budget? On what line item?
I don't know. It'd be a Small Business Resilience Grant line item.
So we'll create a new line item?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's all I have.
All right. Councilwoman Flora?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Kingery?
Just for clarification going off of what Gail said, the $100,000 that would be transferred from edit to the general for the rainy day or however we're doing it, that does go back into edit and then it's a specific line item in the edit budget.
Correct. These are edit reserve funds that would be then appropriated as an edit line item for this specific grant that we're giving out to businesses. This would be the local fund portion. I would use rainy day first and then this. And then any unused funds from that appropriation would still roll back into the edit fund.
Okay. I have no further.
All right, Councilman Nelson?
I have nothing to discuss.
All right. Do we have a motion for passage of proposed resolution 2020-9 read by title alone, a resolution appropriating additional edit funds on first and final reading?
A motion to have it pass, the resolution 2020-9.
All right, Councilman Kingery with a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Councilman Nelson with a second. Do we have any further discussion? President Pro Tim Connor?
Yeah, did I hear you correctly when you said that for those applicants that we're going to award who don't require or don't qualify for reimbursement, we're going to use rainy day funds first?
Yes, ma'am, that was my thinking.
So we really don't need this $100,000 tonight for the Small Business Resilience Grant program?
Depends on, we could come back and all the businesses could be ineligible. I don't see that happening, but it is a possibility through OKRA. At that point, we would use these edit funds to cover the difference.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Flora, any discussion regarding this proposed resolution?
No, they've kind of answered everything I had.
All right, thank you. Councilman Kingery?
I have no further.
Councilman Nelson?
No further.
All right, I will call the question as of the passage of proposed resolution 2020-9 on first and final reading, read by title alone, a resolution appropriating additional edit funds. I will conduct the vote by roll call vote, starting with President Pro Tim Connor?
No.
Councilwoman Flora?
Aye.
Councilman Kingery?
Aye.
Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
The motion passes with a vote of three to one. We will now go to proposed resolution 2020-10. Read by title alone, this is a resolution concerning the Delphi Small Business Resilience Grant. I tried to put together some language based off of some of the motions that were made in pass Monday regarding businesses that should be awarded funds. It was my understanding Monday that of the 37 that initially applied, the city council intended to award funds to all of those businesses that met the criteria of having been in that initial submission, so having submitted by Friday, April 4th, 2020, that they had to have 25 or fewer employees and that they had to have documentation required. Now, at the meeting Monday, the motion was made in pass. The documentation would have to be turned in by Friday evening. Due to some of the confusion trying to schedule a meeting Tuesday night, I didn't think I would get anything out to the businesses on Tuesday. And by the time I did, I went ahead and asked them to turn in everything by Monday. The council did discuss approving the full amounts requested by each of the businesses. And then you wanted to get them paid as quickly as possible. There is a board of public works and safety meeting scheduled for Tuesday morning at 9:00 AM to allow for approval or preapproval of the checks being issued to these businesses. As this is an electronic meeting, I will open it up for discussion before we have a motion in a second. So President Pro Tim Connor, your thoughts?
Are you entertaining amendments at this point?
Not at this point. I'd rather have a motion in a second and then we can do a motion to amend. But if you want to describe your amendment at this time, then you can make it after there is a motion in a second.
After conversation with our council attorney this morning, we felt that it might be, it would be necessary to add a few things and amend a few things. In section 1 of 2020-10, the preference would be that it reads, the council approves only applicants which submitted applications by 4:30 PM on Friday, April 24, 2020.
Are you still there, President Pro Tim Connor?
Her video is not moving.
Replace that with "as specified by the applicant."
Sorry, you cut out for a significant period of time. Where you stopped was the council approves only applicants. It's kind of the last thing we got before you cut out.
In the top line to change, all to only. Leave A as it is. For section B, you've isolated one of the eligibility requirements and it should state, meet all the eligibility requirements of the application. Am I good to go on?
Yes, I got letter B from section A.
And then for C, strike the clause that says "as determined by the mayor" and replace it with "as specified by the application."
There, you're good to go on.
Add section 4. To state, the council directs the clerk treasurer to create a special fund titled CDBG Job Retention-COVID using the guidelines set forth in the April 29, 2020 memo from the State Board of Accounts CPA Debbie Gibson.
Did I say "as instructed by the State Board of Accounts"?
The council directs the clerk treasurer to create a special fund titled CDBG Job Retention-COVID using the guidelines set forth in the April 29, 2020 memo from State Board of Accounts CPA Debbie Gibson.
President Pro Tim Connor, do you have anything further regarding discussion?
Add section 5. The council directs the executive branch of the City of Delphi to remit payments pending approval by the Board of Works through the claims process.
What do you have following Board of Works?
Through the claims process.
All right, do you have anything further?
Not for this one, no.
I will move next to councilwoman Flora. Your thoughts on proposed resolution 2020-10?
Aye. Can I, can you go down? I want to see what the revisions.
The revisions are shown in bold.
Okay. No, it looks okay.
Thank you, Councilman Kingery?
Looks fine.
Councilman Nelson?
I just want to make sure for the section 1, subsection C, by changing "as determined by the mayor" to "as specified by the application", would that affect the people that don't have a business entity report? Because I believe, I'm pulling up the application now, hold on. I believe that would make them ineligible, would it?
If they're sole proprietors, they're eligible. They're not required to have a business entity report. That's the forgiven requirement?
So that should not exclude people that cannot provide business entity report?
We can add line, would you if you want to?
One of the language, "as determined by the mayor", so that when they did send something in, I can say yes, meet the documentation requirements. Also, if a business wasn't in business in 2018 or 2019, they wouldn't have those financial documents.
I would like to, I guess, amend the section 1, subsection C to say have provided the required documentation specified by the application and at the discretion of the mayor.
Councilman Nelson, do you have anything further?
That's all I got.
All right. So I will ask for a motion in a second for the passage of resolution 2020-10 in its original form and then President Pro Tim Connor, I'll entertain a motion to amend as stated. So we have a motion for the passage of proposed resolution 2020-10 read by title alone, a resolution concerning the Delphi Small Business Resilience Grant for first and final reading?
I would motion so.
Councilman Nelson with a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Kingery with a second. President Pro Tim Connor, I'll open the floor for a motion to amend as stated or without, whichever way you want to do it, with your original language you amended or with Cody's as well?
I move that we amend resolution 2020-10 with the amendments provided by myself and Councilwoman Nelson.
We have a motion to amend as currently stated, as shown on the document, with the amendments offered by President Pro Tim Connor and Councilman Nelson. Do we have a second to amend?
I will second that.
All right. We have a motion in a second to amend to state as is currently stated on the screen. I'll now open the floor for discussion before calling the question. President Pro Tim Connor?
Nothing further.
Councilwoman Flora?
Nothing further.
Councilman Kingery?
Nothing further.
Councilman Nelson?
Nothing further.
All right, I will call the question as of the passage of proposed resolution 2020-10 as amended, read by title alone, a resolution concerning Delphi Small Business Resilience Grant. I'll conduct the vote by roll call. President Pro Tim Connor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Flora?
Aye.
Councilman Kingery?
Aye.
Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all. That is all I had for the agenda, but I will open up to the council. If there are other items of concern regarding the Small Business Resilience Grant, I'll open the floor to President Pro Tim Connor.
I wanted to share just briefly an explanation I got from the CPA of the State Board of Accounts today. I asked for some further clarification regarding the edit monies. She again stated that we would not want to transfer the edit monies into any other fund but the edit budget. And she did give some detailed outlining of how we could change our capital improvement plan. It might be needed to consider and potentially be altered to use these edit funds because we are going to have some businesses that we're going to need to fund with city money and we want to be able to do that. And there is a possibility that OKRA may change their guidelines at some point in time and allow us to use the OKRA funds to reimburse our edit funds. At this time, that's not allowed, but she said that might possibly be coming down the pipe. So I wanted to share that additional information with the council.
Mr. Gaskell, if you could, I'm going to meet you at this time. I will go next to councilwoman Flora. Do you have any further action items or items for discussion regarding this grant?
So the list of awardees, is that what the money is going out now?
So the money won't be able to go out until Tuesday, Tuesday of next week at the earliest because we have to have the board of public works and safety meeting to approve that. But if all of the 37 businesses turn in the required documentation, I guess 36 businesses, then those should be sent out as quickly as possible. Anything further, councilwoman Flora?
No.
Councilman Kingery?
I have nothing further now.
Councilman Nelson?
Uh, nothing further.
All right. I will open it up to public comment. I will try to call on each of you individually. Ingrid, do you have anything for us?
No, thank you.
All right. Debbie Lowe?
Yeah, right.
All right. Whoever is the 574-581-1131?
Yeah, hi, that's Matt McKee.
Oh, hey, Matt.
Sorry, I'm on two ways. My camera works on my computer, but not my microphone apparently, so I had to call in with my phone as well. I have a couple of questions actually, dating back to the first application. How was it decided that a business could only apply if they had 25 or fewer employees?
There is a motion in a second by the common council to establish the small business defined as 25 or fewer employees.
Okay. You realize that that excludes all but like two businesses in town, correct?
It's our understanding of the 37 businesses, 36, or of the 37 that applied, 36 do meet this criteria of being 25 or fewer employees.
Yeah, yeah, that leads me to my second question. When I submitted my application, I submitted a cover letter with my grant proposal. I was just curious if the council had read that letter.
Give me a second, Matt, and I'll see if I, I believe I included it with the documentation.
You did.
You did.
In that letter, I asked the council to take a look at that and amend that to be a higher number so that everybody could be applied, be eligible for this. And nothing was ever brought up. I was just curious if that was because they didn't read it or it's because they did not want to amend it, I guess, would be my question.
So now we've had this discussion amongst the council twice. We had it originally when kind of we set the criteria and then it was brought up again at Monday's meeting. That wasn't the only, I guess, discussion within the motion, but it was included in the motion that it would be 25 or fewer employees. So it has been discussed twice. I could, if we do a second round of applications, I can consult with the council and see if their preference would be to increase that number. But it has been discussed twice regarding this first round.
Well, we've made amendments to the original application several times already and the council has made numerous comments over the last three meetings that, you know, they're going to do whatever they can to help all the businesses. It's just now you've excluded one of them. So that's my concern. And I think that, you know, trying to throw this all together so quickly and leaving just one person out is not doing due diligence. So that's my comment.
I appreciate it, Matt. At the same time, when we sent out applications, it did say 25 or fewer. So more businesses could have been excluded. So at the same time, it may be unfair to grant an exception to just one business that applied because there may have been others that didn't apply because they saw that language.
You're right, but now you've also extended, you know, the original application, all the information was supposed to be turned in several weeks ago. You've extended that now so that more people can get information in. You've made amendments already to it. You're just not going to make another one. And that's what I want clarification on that.
Yes, sir. That's something we can look at if there is a round two. We can consult with the city council and see if that's something they'd like to change. I appreciate your comments, sir. I'll move next. So Gail, or not Gail, Debbie Lowe asked in the chat. She asked, I would like to ask about contracts between the city and the businesses. Are there going to be contractual obligations to those businesses who receive public money? I'm wondering if a business is expected contractually to remain in business for a certain period of time. So Debbie, we did, Abby and I were shooting emails back and forth, Abby Deener. We're shooting emails back and forth. I think we have a grant agreement pretty close to being in place. We did not have provisions in there regarding contractually obligated to remain in business for a certain period of time. We remain may stressing to use the funds for the intended purposes. But that is something Abby and I can talk about after the meeting. So move next to Ann Hughes. Ann, do you have anything?
I don't really. I've been listening from the beginning and, you know, the questions that have been asked, I think, I mean, I know I understand. My other concern was when the monies were going to be released, but you already answered that. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Ann. We'll move next to Ben Phillips. Is Ben or Brittany on the line?
Yep, Brittany.
Do you have any comments, discussion items?
So does that mean that all the businesses that did apply besides the one have been approved for funding?
Subject to them getting the documentation in. So as soon as the proper documentation is in, that business is good.
Okay. Fair enough.
Do you have any further, Brittany?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move next down Edwin and Emily. Do either of you have anything regarding the OKRA portion of the grant?
Not unless yet. Yeah. They are going to have a training session for us on Tuesday. So hopefully they've gotten all the things worked out that they can tell us on Tuesday. So we'll have more information after that.
All right, thank you, sir. Emily, do you have anything to follow up to that?
No, it's just, if you got that income verification form, that that needs to go out to those businesses as well that are going into that round one or round two, however, we discussed that. So we just need to make sure that that is included as that is what determines your eligibility with the grant.
Okay. So businesses that are on the line, I will be shooting those out at the conclusion of this meeting. Emily, those have to go to the employees of the business, correct?
Correct.
All right. Anything further, Emily?
No.
All right, thank you. Erin Jubel?
No, I don't have any other questions.
All right, thanks, Erin. Julia Leahy?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things. So in other words, the businesses that do not meet the income eligibility requirements that has been set down, does that mean then that those businesses will be funded by the additional appropriations through the rainy day and edit?
Yes, those will be funded by local funds.
Okay. And then also, any businesses that maybe, like the sole proprietors, that would not qualify under the OKRA funds, will those then be eligible for the city funds?
Yes, it's also local funds. I guess back to your first question, there may be some businesses that they themselves are not at the 51% low to moderate income. But we're going to look at the aggregate businesses. So all the businesses that we turn in, we can get reimbursed for those if, as an aggregate, they meet the 51% low to moderate income. Now, that won't include, we won't turn into OKRA, the sole proprietors and the nonprofits, any businesses that are ineligible. But the businesses, all the businesses will receive funding. It's just, everything else will be to determine how much we get in reimbursement.
Okay, perfect. And then, and just a suggestion, if you decide to do this again, because there are some that did not apply because, one, they didn't have employees and another, I think it was more of a timeline issue. You know, if you do this again, maybe consider changing your 25 employees to 25 FTE, like full-time equivalents or less. That might help a little bit because, you know, some of these people may have had part-time employees. They work two hours a week and yet they're being disqualified for that. So it's just a thought that you might consider changing that 25 to FTE. Just a thought. And then again, if you do this again, you have three new businesses that all opened in January. So, you know, they obviously didn't qualify, but they put a lot of money on the line just to be. to get up and running. So just something to think about in the future, but I appreciate all that you're doing.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Julia. Those are all good ideas. We'll move next to Kevin Gaskell. Kevin, do you have any discussion items, question?
Did you unmute him?
I clicked it. I don't know if it actually worked or not.
He's still showing, but there you go.
There you go. Kevin Gaskell, do you have anything?
No, I don't, Shane, but thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll move on to Nate Lamar.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. I believe that's the Mendels who shows user.
Quick question. So originally, you were only going to give the money to the eleven. So now are you saying that everything's done on Monday, we're going to go ahead and distribute the money next week to the others?
Yes, ma'am. The reason it didn't get sent out today is because there's discrepancy in the number of businesses that turned in all of the documentation. So it appeared that it was significantly less than eleven, and so that's why we wanted to have this meeting yet this week.
Okay, but you're going to go ahead and do the whole thirty-six if they get their return on Monday, correct?
If all, if they meet the criteria and all the documentation is turned in by four-thirty p.m. Monday.
We want to clarify that. Thank you.
All right, you have anything further?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, thank you. Aneah Worley?
Thank you, I don't have any comments right now.
All right, thank you. Is there any member of the public that I didn't get?
Debbie Lowe put up another question across the screen and asked for a total expenditure and number of businesses. And I know that you sent us a tally today and gave us a list of, I believe it was seventeen or nineteen businesses that have qualified. And that is a total of eighty thousand nineteen dollars and six cents. And of those, there are seven businesses that don't qualify within the reimbursement realm, and that is a total of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars that the city can expect to have to cover at this point unless OKRA changes their guidelines. Just to kind of give you an idea of where we are.
Thank you. And she did ask, will a general fund be utilized for those businesses who are likely to qualify for OKRA before using the rainy day fund? That answer is kind of, so there will be that CDBG job creation COVID fund will be created within the larger general funds of the city. So we will draw down on that newly created fund, which should be reimbursed by OKRA, but those are in essence, general fund dollars.
Right. We can't put edit and rainy day funds into the special account that can be reimbursed. So if we spend all of our money out of rainy day and edit, we can't be reimbursed. We're going to have to put some general fund money into that special account, according to the guidelines set forth by the State Board of Accounts if we want to use the OKRA money and get reimbursed.
Right, it will be general fund money that will be running it similar to how we ran the Stella grant. So you make, you use general fund money to make the initial payments, but then you get reimbursed from the state. So that special fund that we created should end up being, having a zero balance.
When you submit claims next Tuesday to the Board of Works, where is that money coming from?
It's going to come from, it's going to come from rainy day and that newly created fund based off of eligibility to OKRA.
So you're going to start with rainy day funds and general funds?
Correct, will be drawn from rainy day in that specially created fund, which is utilizing general funds.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
All right. Any other members of the public that I didn't get, then I can go to the attorneys if they have anything? All right, Mr. Williams, do you have anything?
Nothing further, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Deener?
Nothing to add, thank you.
All right, thank you. So with that, there's one last motion to be made.
Shane, Ben's got a question on the chat.
So Ben, that is the, I guess I'll go back to it. That is the list of all the businesses that as of like four-thirty p.m. today had turned in all the proper documentation. But it is not, it is not all the businesses that will receive grant money. All the businesses that turn in all the documentation required by four-thirty p.m. Monday will receive the money they asked for. So this is just a list of the nineteen that have so far turned in all their documents.
Okay, I was sweating a little bit, I was just making sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Attorney Nelson with a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
I've got Councilman Kingery with a second. I will call the question as to adjourning. President Pro Tim Connor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Flora?
Aye.
Councilman Kingery?
Aye.
Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for joining us on this meeting. The meeting has adjourned at six thirty-five p.m. Business owners, members of the public, if you have any questions, feel free to shoot me an email or give me a call. It's mayor@cityofdelphi.org and my office number is seven six five, five six four, three zero, three nine. Thank you all for attending. I'm glad we could do this.
Thank you.